Good evening and welcome to the Wallingford Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 27, 2021. I'll call this meeting to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Lavell, may we please have a roll call?
Mrs. Allenson?
Here.
Mrs. Costelli?
Here.
Mrs. Corso?
Here.
Ms. Leveque?
Here.
Mrs. Purcell?
Here.
Mrs. Raccio?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mr. Votto?
Here.
Nine members present and voting.
Thank you very much. The next item of business is the Student Board Representatives from Lyman Hall, Erin Chioffi. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Erin Chioffi. I'm a senior at Lyman Hall High School. I am Student Council President, which has given me the honor of being here tonight as the student representative. Firstly, I'd like to say that the students and teachers at Lyman Hall are all adjusting well and following the guidelines and the rules, which has kept our quarantine numbers low and are very effective at keeping us in school. Athletics are really important at Lyman Hall, and so the student athletes are very excited to have their regular season this year. The Student Fan Section, called the WAMOB, is happy to be back, and they're supporting their fellow classmates on the field during all sporting events. Some important events this week is the Lyman Hall Field Hockey Team will be having their Senior Night on Wednesday, September 29, against North Haven. And then Friday, October 1, there's a home game, again, a home football game against Lead Yard, which will most likely be Pinkout themed to support Cancer Awareness Month. This Thursday, September 30, will be Lyman Hall's virtual open house from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. The College and Career Center is hosting a college fair Monday, October 4, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. There will be many different colleges attending, such as four-year colleges, two-year colleges, and tech schools, and there will also be military recruiters there for students who might be interested in that path. At this event, there will also be a Financial Aid Information Night for students and parents to attend to gain more knowledge about this. Evening Conferences will start on Thursday, October 14, at 6:00 p.m. Student Council is currently putting in strong efforts to try and have a homecoming this year because that's one of the biggest events in high school, and a lot of students like to attend that. Lots of hard work and planning has to go into that, though. We have to make a lot of phone calls and figure out what we can do to accommodate to the current guidelines. We are looking to have it outside in, like, mid-October. And lastly, I just wanted to congratulate a Lyman Hall teacher, Mrs. Picard, for winning Wallingford Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, from Mark T. Sheehan, Paul and Isha. Good evening.
So at Sheehan, students have been really happy to get back to school, and we actually held our first virtual open house on September 14.
If you could step a little closer to the microphone?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Okay. So students have been really happy to get back to school, and we held our first virtual open house on September 14, where parents were able to meet with their students' teachers and learn about their curriculums and plans for the year. And school counselors visited our senior English classes on September 15 to provide information about post-secondary plans, including a rundown of the Common App and the whole college application process. And our crew, the club, held their first annual cleanup of the year at the Trail of Terror, helping set up and organize the upcoming festivities. And college visits have started, and students are encouraged to join and learn and engage with admissions officers. And I'll bring it over to Paul for the upcoming events.
Thank you.
So the Sheehan Marching Band showcase will be held on the 25th, which has already happened. They performed a whole competition with other bands across the state and competed at Home Turf. And also, the Yearbook Club has been going around throughout the school, taking photos of all the clubs and all the club members, and this occurred on the 27th and 28th. And as Lyman Hall mentioned, the College and Career Fair will be happening at the Toyota Oakdale Feeder from 6:00 to 7:30. Students and parents, juniors and seniors, are strongly encouraged to attend this thing. And along with the College and Career Fair, there's also will be hosting two 40-minute financial aid workshops, which will be hosted by Nicholas, known as Cole Rothfuss, a financial aid counselor at Yale, and this will also be held from 6:00 to 6:45 p.m. And these workshops will help students and parents understand the FAFSA and the financial aid process and help them undergo their college applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin, and Paul and Isha, for keeping us updated. And of course, you're free to stay for the entire meeting, but you may have homework or other activities that you might want to get to, so that you might want to leave or stay, it's up to you. The next item on the agenda is presentation of awards. Now, because we're in the days of COVID here, we're changing the format a bit, so we're going to have each individual come up and receive their recognition, and then please sit down. Mrs. Belizzi will do that. And then we'll have a culminating round of applause at the end of each group. So I will call up the first individual, and we're on recognition of the 2021 Wallingford Public Schools Paraeducators of the Year. Our first individual is Deborah Fitch from Mark T. Sheehan High School. Our next individual is Sharon Hurlberg from Dag Hammerschold Middle School. We have Janie Santiago from James H. Moran Middle School. I don't know if she may not be here. All right, we'll move on to Laura Barassa from Moses Y. Beach Elementary School. Next, Gina Golarani from Cook Hill Elementary School. Gina Cabrera from Rock Hill Elementary School. Bonnie Steck from E.C. Stevens Elementary School. And Linda Subcoyak from Mary G. Fritz Elementary School. Not attending this evening, but I would like to recognize in absentia the other two Paraeducators of the Year listed, Gregory Wilson from Lyman Hall High School and Mary Alice Carbonoff from Pond Hill Elementary School. Thank you all. All of our Paraeducators are very special to us, and thank you for the wonderful job that you do with our students every day. The next group of individuals being recognized are our Teachers of the Year in each building, and we'll start with Christine Rich from Dag Hammerschold Middle School. Amanda Roma from Cook Hill Elementary School. Samantha Iadarola from Parker Farms Elementary School. Melane Widman from Rock Hill Elementary School. Kristin Balsamo from E.C. Stevens Elementary School. Jennifer Leonard from Mary G. Fritz Elementary School. And again, not attending this evening, but I wish to recognize in absentia Joshua Lambert from Mark T. Sheehan High School and Lori Moreno from James H. Moran Middle School. And now, we are on to recognition of our district recipients of awards, and the first award will be presented by Ms. Belizzi. And speaking on behalf of the recipient will be Mrs. Sagnella, Principal of Parker Farms, and the recipient is Barbara Rocheloo, the District Paraeducator of the Year.
First of all, it is wonderful to be here and to be together and to be in this same room. It has been a long time coming, and what a great way to spark this off, right? So is it okay?
Hold on. I think we need to have the, maybe the mic isn't on.
How about now? There we go. It is a great honor to be here today to congratulate Barbara Rocheloo, Wallingford Public Schools' Paraeducator of the Year. I am Christina Sagnella, the proud principal of Parker Farms, and I have had the privilege of working with Barbara for the last five of her 26 years as a paraeducator here. Barbara has spent the last 11 years at Parker Farms, and there hasn't been a day, a week, a month, or a year that has gone by without Barbara showcasing her incredible amount of dedication, commitment, and love to her students, their families, our staff, and our whole school community. Last year, Barbara was new to the fourth-grade team, but that did not stop her from continuing to be proactive in all that she did for her students with the new team. Her new colleagues quickly realized how amazing Barbara was, and they shared, "Barbara's up for any task," and has embraced her new world of teaching in person and online with ease. She helps any student in need and has created many strong relationships in which the students trust her. She is caring and thorough and works patiently with students to make sure they are working to their fullest potential. Barbara's challenge of learning the online world of Google Meets did not stop her for one moment. She consistently met with two voluntary distant learners daily and provided the support, modifications, and accommodations that they needed. This time was so valuable to these students, not only because it helped them succeed, but also because it helped them feel truly connected to another adult from their school. Barbara is a paraeducator who is committed to implementing all instructional and behavioral strategies with our students in the classroom or virtually. Barbara is always focused on her students' learning environment and how best she can support them. She knows how to create the environment that works best for her students, whether it is supporting them in a whole-class lesson or pulling them to work independently. Barbara is able to determine when a student needs support. She is seen giving endless words of encouragement, praise, and support to not only her students, but to all students in the class who may need it. Her students look forward to seeing her, and they know that with her, support, they will succeed. Our special education teacher shared that Barbara does all this without question and always has the best interest of all students in mind. Barbara is not only a paraeducator who is committed to her students, but she is also an active participant in our whole school community. She participates in Spirit Days, facilitates our monthly birthday board and student birthday cards as a part of our advisory committee, leads our fifth-grade flag-raising team, and has supported the Bulldog News Live crew weekly for morning announcements, and is always willing to help any way throughout the building. Barbara, we are so incredibly proud of you as you receive this well-deserved honor.
Our next award, I'd like to call up Mr. Corso, Principal of Lyman Hall High School, to recognize our District Teacher of the Year, Emily Picard.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having me here tonight, and thank you to the board for allowing me to honor one of Lyman Hall's finest and this year's District Teacher of the Year. So it's my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Emily Picard. Emily has been at Lyman Hall for the past 12 years as our wildlife biology teacher in our agricultural science program. During those 12 years, Emily has been able to positively impact each and every student that has come through her program. Her student-first mentality allows her to provide a one-of-a-kind experience for all of her students. From her trips on the Magic School Bus, and for those of you that don't know, if you're a member of the Lyman Hall Agricultural Science Program, you generally have a year-long field trip pass. You know, COVID, throw a little kink into that, but we're getting back to normal. But at any time, our teachers can get on the Magic School Bus and take our students on an adventure to any local river, lake, the Long Island Sound, any forest, and really provide them with a unique experience. So as I said, from those trips on the Magic School Bus to any forest, lake, river, or Long Island Sound, and everything in between, Emily provides her students with an education and experience beyond the traditional classroom setting. Emily was recently recognized as the Connecticut Outdoor and Environmental Education Association 2020 Educator of the Year, so she's had quite a few years here of being honored, and it's all for tremendous work. She's also the Connecticut Association of Agricultural Educators Outstanding Young Member in 2016. Emily's love of the environment, as well as her program, is clear. She currently serves on the Meriden Natural Resource Inventory Committee, the Killinworth Land Conservation Trust, the Quinnipiac River Watershed Association, as well as the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Team. That, all while she's teaching our students to become great environmental activists, and as you can see by her attire, she rarely leaves work, so she came today directly from our agricultural science program, where she works endless hours with our students. And for that, we will forever be grateful, so thank you, Emily. One of the most exciting recent developments has been the recent designation of our new land lab near Lyman Hall. This would not have happened if Emily, while teaching and adapting through this COVID environment and helping our students learn, didn't find the time to convince the town of the positive impact this would have on our community, as well of our students, as our students. Please welcome me in introducing the 2021 Wallingford Public Schools Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Emily Picard.
And I'd like to call Mr. Piasentini from our principal at James H. Moran Middle School up to the microphone to speak regarding our District Administrator of the Year, Mr. Dan Bologna.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Education for providing this opportunity. Thank you to our Assistant Superintendents and Superintendent for providing this opportunity, and a quick congratulations to our deserving award recipients, our paras, incredibly critic-like, I can't say enough, including Janie Santiago Moran's very own, as well as all the teachers. Teachers of the Year are incredible people. Obviously, being recognized by your colleagues is probably the most important thing beyond your students. So congratulations to everyone, especially Laura Moreno from Moran. Not that I'm biased, not that I'm biased, but she's awesome. So Dan Bologna, I'm lucky. I'm incredibly lucky to have Dan by my side every day, whether we're in school or not in school, weekend, weekday, an incredible colleague, an incredible partner in this job. From the time we interviewed him, and I'm not sure if Mr. Votto will remember, the duct tape story that Mr. Bologna told us that day in his interview process. Not that getting duct tape is the most important part of being an assistant principal, but Dan told us a story about how he allowed his students to duct tape him to a wall, and Mr. Votto was very curious about this. He hadn't heard of this event just yet. I don't know if he ever did it as a principal, Mr. Votto, but it was a great story. From that moment on, we knew we had a gem. When I think about Mr. Bologna, the word that comes to mind is attention. You know that every time you're having a conversation with Dan, he's giving you his full, undivided attention. He cares about you. He cares about what you're saying. He talks to students the same way he talks to his teachers, his paras, his custodians, his parents, to me. He gives everyone the same attention. Everything you have to say is important. He works each day in and out with that same attention. It's an attention to detail, from his colored schedules, to his knowledge of the staff, to his knowledge of students. We have a little under 600 kids at Moran. I can probably say that Dan knows 550 kids' names, and even with a mask on, with a matted mask on, he knows his kids, he knows his staff. His attention to what he does, to make sure that every kid that walks in the building gets what they need. And if he can't do it, he's going to find a way to do it, and that, for me, is a credit to his hard work, a credit to his dedication to the school, dedication to the job. I learn from him every day. I learn from him every day, and it's a pleasure to work with him. And he does this all while he has three young boys at home. Two of them are twin boys, so that alone, I don't know how he's not going crazy on his own, and then he's got to come and deal with me and then some of the other people that work in the building as well. So again, congratulations to everybody, but most congratulations to Mr. Bologna on a well-deserved award. So I want everyone to know that if you gave me a list of topics to talk about, myself would be the very last one. So I'm not going to spend too much time. Really, what I want to spend time saying is thank you to the board. Thank you to my colleagues in administration, both in the buildings and in Central Office. You know, I am lucky as well. I know I work with a great team of individuals who are always there for support, who are there for guidance, and are there for everything that I need. I have an incredible staff that make every day an easy job, at least I think it is. And most of all, I want to thank all the students at Moran. You know, there are days my alarm clock goes off, I don't want to wake up, but when I think about all the kids I'm going to see, whether there's a mask on them or not, whether it's going to be positive interactions or ones that are going to be tough conversations, I can genuinely say that I wake up every morning, and I am lucky to have this job because of the 574 kids at Moran. I'm working on getting to the last 24 names, but I am lucky each and every day to work with them. And I'd also, lastly, like to thank Mr. Piasentini. I've worked with him for the last five years, and I can say he's been inspirational and a huge help in my growth as administrator, and just thank you all for this opportunity. I really appreciate it.
I'm not sure if the Teacher of the Year or the Paraeducator of the Year wanted to say a few words, but okay, that's okay, too.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of everyone at Central Office and all of our staff working very hard, thank you. Congratulations to all of you. I know you've all worked very hard this past year. It's been an interesting year, for sure. It's been an opportunity for all of us to kind of grow, to learn, to be outside of our comfort zone, but to really do what we can and what's best for our students first. And so I just want to say thank you again. Congratulations. It is a well-deserved honor for each and every one of you. It is an honor for me to work alongside all of you. You have worked hard. You deserve this recognition. Congratulations. Thank you again.
On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations to all of our award recipients. Please, again, award recipients, you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but please feel free to leave, to go home to your families, to celebrate your accomplishment, because we are so very proud of you and very happy to have you here for our students. So on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for all that you do for our students. We'll continue with our meeting. The next item on the agenda is public comment. As I read your name from the sign-up sheet, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. You will each receive three minutes of time to make your comment to the board. Please refrain from comments having to do with personnel issues or personal remarks about employees. Concerns regarding personnel are to be handled by the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel. So our first individual that has signed up to speak is Jennifer So our first individual that has signed up to speak is Jennifer Bannon. I don't know that it matters which microphone you go to. Welcome.
Hi, back. Jennifer Bannon, 34 Spring Street. I have two children at Lyman Hall, one's a freshman and one's a senior. I'm kind of going to get right to the point, knowing that the-
Excuse me, we're getting a light flash, and you have to step a little closer. You're not being picked up. Closer to the microphone, so we could hear you.
Good?
Yes, wonderful.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Do you want me to restate my name?
Do we have it, Ms. Lavell? I think we have it, thank you.
Okay. I'd like to ask this council if anything that any of these parents, when we come up to you and talk to you about how we feel about these mask mandates being forced on our children, I want to know if anything that we say to you guys matters. I want to know if you guys actually listen to us, if you're hearing us when we sit here and tell you that we want the option of sending our children to school without masks, without fear of persecution from other children, without fear of teachers treating them differently. I feel like every time we come up here, it doesn't matter, that you don't hear us and you're not listening. And I want to know if you actually do.
We typically do not comment during public comment, but I will say that the board, this is a very attentive board, and we are listening to what you are saying, but this is your opportunity to make your comments to the board.
I think you're afraid to do what's right because you're afraid that you're going to upset the people who support these unnecessary mandates and don't care what the parents who don't support these mandates think or want. What you will do, with the majority of the parents in this town against forced masks of our kids and have been patient with you, what are you going to do now that we know that Lord Lamont has continued his draconian measures? The only people it's hurting is our kids, and he continues to get more financing. While Lamont collects more money for the state, he continues to punish our kids. Why is it that we can all walk around without masks, without masks, and the kids can't? Increased carbon dioxide in their systems, bacteria building up in their sinus cavities, anxiety inhibiting their learning, never mind that they eat lunch without their masks, they go to gym without their masks, they play sports without their masks, are around each other outside of school without their masks, but forced on them in school. But none of that seems to matter. You continue to bend the knee to the governor, who should not have these powers. Why does my husband continue to put on an army uniform, deploy, leave his family and his stepkids, took an oath to uphold the Constitution when I feel like not one of you supports it? You vote more masks on our kids, you take our rights to choose for them. Again, all we're doing is asking for a choice. We are not asking to take choice away from parents who want their kids masked. We want our kids treated fairly and no different than if they are not wearing a mask. You cannot deny our children their education because they refuse to with this mandate. How many kids have you guys lost so far to homeschooling by parents who've had enough? It's time for you to stand up against the governor and stand up for us. Remember that elections are coming. And if you're not going to stand with us, we'll make sure that you are not up there next time. Thank you.
The next individual on the list is Charity Singer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Charity Singer, 8 Charbin Lane, Wallingford. Just want to echo what Jen said. We're going to keep coming, we just want the choice. We just want you guys to really stick up for us and our kids and just give us the choice. We're not asking you to not make people wear masks if they don't want to, we're just asking you to give us a choice as parents, because we know our kids' strengths and weaknesses, and we know how this is affecting them. And it would just really be nice if we had someone in the town that's elected that we know can help our kids do something. And a second thing that I wanted to bring up was, it came to my attention today that my son's first-grade teacher was denied a request for a one-year leave for medical reasons.
Okay.
I know, but I just, it's wrong, and you guys, it's really, really wrong.
That really, we can't discuss in a public forum? This is not the place for that.
Well, the vote is public. You can view the comments, you can see who voted for it. Everybody knows, so I just wanted to bring it up and let you guys know that I think it's really, really messed up.
The next individual on the list is Sarah Tausick.
Seeing as we're not allowed to address issues that are on the agenda, which is the resignation of Lori Daddio, I would like to request an appointment with the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel.
I believe that can be arranged, but this is, that would be Mr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson, who is right there. So we can make arrangements for that to occur.
Okay. And what do I tell the families who have sent in testimonials to be shared against this egregious decision that you all have made?
He probably can accept that information as well.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, if it is on the agenda, why are we not allowed to come speak?
This is a personnel issue, and-
It's a human rights issue to have a child that is in the NICU.
It's a personnel issue-
For 100-plus days, and to be forced to resign, it costs you $0.
It's a personnel issue, and we-
It's a human rights issue.
We do not discuss personnel issues in public.
But can we discuss human rights issues?
I'm not going to debate over this issue.
Are you a parent?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So if your child, if you were told that your child has a 50/50, we're not discussing anyone in particular.
This is not an opportunity to debate. This is an opportunity for you to make a comment.
I'm not allowed to make a comment because it's regarding personnel.
That is-
Why can't we debate?
Excuse, excuse me. Excuse me, please. This is an opportunity for public comment.
Okay.
It is not a back-and-forth between the board and the public. It is a public comment.
My public comment is regarding our students. It is regarding what is best for them. Wallingford does not have a great record for how it treats its teachers. I know several teachers in other districts who get paid significantly less than here and will not step foot in this district because of the contracts and how they are treated. What affects our students is how our teachers are treated. And if our teachers are treated like trash, that their tenure doesn't matter, their experience, their stellar records do not count for anything, that when a pretty much life-or-death situation occurs and they are treated like yesterday's leftovers, it affects our students. These are testimonials of how our students benefited from this one particular individual. And I feel that all of you who voted against this particular individual should feel shame. Your decision is inhumane, it is unconscionable. I literally, I can't, I can't. So shame on all of you.
The next individual on the list is Jacqueline McFarlane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I also came on behalf of Lori Daddio and several parents who-
Excuse me? Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Jacqueline McFarlane, 58 Condracki Lane.
Again, if we can refrain from using particular persons' names.
Understandable. So I understand what you just said to Sarah, and I will make sure to also follow up and make an appointment as well.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much. The next individual on the list is Roberto Soto.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Compassion.
I'm sorry, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Roberto Soto, 48 Babary Drive, which you already have.
Thank you.
Compassionate, resourceful, passionate, caring. Only some adjectives that would describe a great teacher. My daughter Olivia had a challenging first grade year, as with many students did. Had an awesome teacher, dedicated. I can't even describe in the correct words how much that teacher meant to her. Then COVID hit. What a loss for all of us, not just my daughter, for parents, teachers, and the community. To see the smile on her face the first day that we went virtual was awesome. To see the excitement on her face for that, as I'm sitting there teaching my own class, helping her get on, helping her to make her connection. It's those connections that make our kids and this community a wonderful place to be. Think about what you're doing. Secondly, I'd like to applaud you on keeping our kids safe. I myself got the dreaded call this weekend, not a call I wanted to get. However, not all of our kids have the same immunities or vaccinations that are required. So I applaud you for taking that courageous step, regardless of how difficult that decision may be, because that decision saves lives.
The next individual on the list is Stacy Nakarato.
Stacy Nakarato, 6 Quigley Road. So I kind of timed myself today, I'm at like 3:40, is that okay?
Well, we try to keep to three, but if you could finish up your thoughts, we try to be a little more flexible.
Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, so last Board of Ed meeting was my first. After I left, I sent an email stating I thought there was a disconnect between the parents and the panel. Initially, I felt bad, because maybe that's how these meetings go. Maybe I couldn't tell your emotion because it's covered by a mask. And then I stopped feeling bad, because this feels very judge and jury to me. It feels that us parents have to plead a case, like we have to convince you, the governor, and whoever else what is best for our children. So I think moving forward, there needs to be more open dialogue between the Board of Ed members and the parents, because I don't have the first clue where anybody stands. When it comes to masks, some may feel it's just a mask. I remember when it was just two weeks to slow the spread. Here we are, 18 months later and divided. One side for choice, one side for force, and that is the only thing I am anti, is force. We had Farm Aid this past weekend, everything from concerts, professional sports, fairs, et cetera, all of which have proven to not be super-spreaders. But yet our kids, who throw out all of this, have been the lowest transmitters, are being punished the most. I keep my kids home when they aren't feeling well. I have the decency to respect other people. I understand that what may work for one household may not for another. Who would I be to tell somebody else what to do, especially when it comes to their kids? So I expect the same respect in return. I printed out an article to pass along from Dr. Marty McCary from John Hopkins University. He covers four points in detail of adverse effects of kids wearing masks. To abbreviate, it's everything from fogging, acne, breathing issues, headaches, increase in the amount of carbon dioxide in the blood, anxiety, lack of facial expression recognition, and the buildup of pathogenic bacteria. So what more do we need to hear? I also looked, and this is public knowledge, on the HHS data hub, of the 30 to 40 hospitals listed on there in Connecticut, there are 8,446 inpatient beds, 6,862 of which are in use. 302 of those are in use for COVID-19. That's 3.61% of beds being used for COVID-19 as of today, 9/27/2021, out of a current population in Connecticut of 3.6 million. This information clearly states that Connecticut is not in a public health emergency. Governor Lamont's executive order should be up on September 30th. Us parents have emailed his office with zero response, and some parents have called and were hung up on. I saw how the Cheshire parents were vilified for their intense emotion. But these are our children, our most precious, important, loved people in our lives, and they don't have a voice. So no government official, school board member, or any person on the outside can tell a parent what an appropriate level of emotion is when speaking on their child's behalf. We're tired of not being heard, and we know we're not being heard because nothing has changed. And I'm almost done. I may not know the details to every little law, but I do know my rights, and I know when my parental rights are being stripped away, little by little, under the guise of just. So you guys are all up for reelection. I'm just curious how you're going to have our backs moving forward.
The next individual on the list is Elizabeth Leonard.
Elizabeth Leonard, 44 Jamestown Circle. I apologize in advance for the lack of voice. I've had a full weekend of kids' sports, so it's only going to get worse from here. I'll try and get through this. I won't go further into the statistics and science behind why masks don't work. There are others here who have searched for the truth, has been more extensive than mine, many of which you heard last month. I will, however, say that the longer this continues, it feels like Munchausen by proxy. For those who are not familiar, Munchausen Syndrome by proxy is a mental illness in which a caregiver or person creates an illness or an injury that does not exist for personal gain or attention. These kids in school without symptoms are not sick, yet they're treated as such. Just for reference, the definition of asymptomatic is a condition or a person producing or showing no symptoms. Yet how many times have you known someone to have the flu or stomach bug and have no symptoms? Let's stop letting the forces that be within the government bend reality here. If you have no symptoms, it's because you're not sick. Trust me when I say I'm no fan of Tony Fauci, but if we're going to listen to the experts, let's start with him. He is, after all, the highest-paid government employee in the country. He has said more than once during the course of this pandemic that masks are not effective in stopping the virus. If anything, it might make you feel better about it. He has also stated asymptomatic individuals are not the driving force behind the spread of COVID-19. We need to stop making our personal health the responsibility of everyone else. Your health is not my responsibility, just as my health and that of my children is not yours. When our governor requests yet another extension of his emergency powers due to a dire health emergency, while simultaneously promoting a massive increase in marketing for tourism in Connecticut, not to mention Farm Aid event just hosted in Hartford this past weekend, it's another red flag that this isn't about anyone's health, it's about money. When football stadiums can be filled to capacity with no masks in sight, it isn't about health, it's about money. And when the elite and our politicians continue to have their red carpet events and parties and the masks come off as soon as they think the cameras aren't rolling, it isn't about health, it's about money. You all have the ability here to stand up for what is right and go down in the history of this town and state as the Board of Ed that listened to concerned parents, gave us the choice, and ended this tyrannical nonsense. Or you could go down as the Board of Ed that ignored the facts, refused critical thinking, and continued these draconian mandates. Nevertheless, we'll all be forced to deal with the consequences this has created for our children, five, 10, 15 years down the road. But for those of you who continue to vote for these mandates, the blood will be on your hands. I believe I can speak for all parents here tonight when I leave you with this. May it never be said of me that I was silent in the face of fear, and in doing so, passed the battle on to my children.
And the final individual that signed up to speak is Katie Foster.
Hello, Katie Foster, 23 1/2 Grove Street. So I was here last month, letting you know that my nine-year-old son, who went all last year with a mask, headaches, anxiety attacks, nose bleeds. We made it through the final with the understanding that there's no way that you guys would make him wear a mask this year. In fact, I spoke with, along with several other parents, Dr. Menzo, who I know isn't here anymore, but he stated to us that you guys, a lot of you, actually agree that we shouldn't have the mask mandates, but that if you don't follow, you would lose about $4.3 million in funding from the government. Sounds like coercion to me. Well, my son had two panic attacks within the first three days of school. I pulled him. There's no way I'm going to torture my child because of him being at risk of getting COVID or him giving you guys COVID. It doesn't make much sense to me, especially since, again, there's only three hundred and two beds being used for COVID right now. Um, we have the highest vaccination rate in the country. None of this makes any sense. All of our kids are, my son's at soccer right now. There's two kids probably out of hundreds who aren't masked. None of them are masked, except for two, I think. Um, they're all closed. I mean, if you've ever been to a kid's soccer game, they're literally in a pile, just face to face trying to kick a ball. They're, I mean, we, this is getting a little ridiculous. I think you guys all understand that. Um, and so for me to sit here and tell you numbers and all of that doesn't make any sense to me when I know a lot of you agree. Um, what we're asking is for you guys to actually stand up and fight with us. I'm not even asking you to lift the mandate because I understand you're being forced. Um, but at least stand up with us, fight alongside us. Help us get the support we need for our kids. I understand that there should be parents that get to make that decision, but we should get to make that decision for our kids so they don't have to get pulled for no reason from school. My son got ninety-nine percentile for the OSAT test last year, and now I have to pull him from school, which actually ended up being the best thing ever because he can actually focus on things and not be bored at school. So actually, thank you for that fact. But I did want to bring up one thing on the last meeting that I heard, um, actually Erin brought up, was your ALICE training protocols, the Active Shooter Training Protocols. It seems that these masks go against the, the training that you guys have received for an active shooter, and that, that should be concerning. Um, I'm not quite sure what you guys plan to do if, during this circumstance, when emotions are high, if there ends up being a concern. Does this not go against your Active Shooter Protocol? So, I mean, that pretty much leaves me at my point. I did want to also ask, um, I don't know her name, but she's sitting next to Danielle. Um, you, at the last meeting, you literally pulled down your mask to lean into Danielle as she leaned into you to talk to her. And it, it brought up an interesting thought that if you aren't concerned about wearing your mask and leaning in, that a lot of this just seems like it's show. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is executive session. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussion of acceptance of resignations, discussion of acceptance of retirements, discussion of appointment of candidates for teaching positions, and discussion of the tentative agreement with the Wallingford Education Secretaries Union.
Still moved?
Thank, thank you. Made and seconded on the motion, discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motions has carried, and we are in executive session. All right, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So, second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Ross and seconded by Mrs. Raccio. Discussion on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion has carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items seven point one to seven point one-two.
Still moved?
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion has passed. Um, no items have been removed from the consent agenda, so we're on to correspondence with our secretary, Mr. Ross.
I have a thank you note here. Thank you for your time and expression of sympathy at a time when it was most needed. Your thoughtfulness is appreciated and will always be remembered. Love, Mike, Denise, and Robin. And it's Honey Yatskis is the last name. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We're on to committee reports. I'm happy to report that, um, uh, Mr. Votto, who usually is the, our representative to ACES, has taken on a new administrative job. Congratulations to him. And, and so, um, since I'm the alternate, I will be reporting on the ACES Governing Board. So the ACES Governing Board met on September ninth, 2021. The minutes of the June third, 2021, meeting and the June twenty-fifth, 2021, meeting were approved. The executive director's goals were discussed with the following identified draft goal theme areas. Student outcomes, human capital, fiscal capital, professional learning and plant and operations. Additionally, the application for the S R three grants was reviewed and approved. The governing board approved the filing of the fiscal reports, subject to audit, the human resources report, and the early head start updates. Under the curriculum instruction report, Mr. Rice indicated that the ACES magnet schools, which consists of ECA, Chase, and Wintergreen, as well as the ACES specialized schools, Mill Elementary, Mill Academy, Whitney High, uh, High School North, Whitney Academy, and Create, the Center for Autism Spectrum and Developmental Disorders, Village School, Integrated Preschool, EIBI, and Mead Elementary School are providing full in-person programming. New programs to serve students include ACES at Ansonia Middle School and ACES West Haven Collaborative at McGrill Elementary. The Urban Youth at Mill Elementary and Aspire will begin the year in a hybrid model. The ACES West Haven Collaborative will begin the year with students attending school five days a week in person on a half-day schedule. Under new business, the governing board approved the ACES substitute rates and the policy on leave time for staff. The governing board entered into an executive session for the purpose of real estate matters in Hampden and Clinton. The governing board came out of executive session and the meeting was adjourned. The next ACES Governing Board meeting is scheduled for October fourteenth, 2021. The next item is the business think take. Mrs. Castelli?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
I have to tell you, this, this committee continues to amaze and excite me with all the great opportunities we're offering to our students. Rob Covey gave an update, uh, about grants that we've been awarded. And the good news is we received a twenty thousand five hundred dollar grant from Workforce Alliance that will train teachers and promote manufacturing. We also received a forty-six thousand dollar Perkins Enhancement Grant for drones, which will enhance our agricultural science program and technology education. Funds provide curriculum to train students in drone flight and actually become FAA certified drone pilots. With this grant, we purchased some professional drones. One that has thermal cameras and one with RTK capabilities. It's real time and then some physics term, uh, the K stands for. It's capabilities that are used for surveying land, land mapping, and monitoring land changes such as erosion, so they can actually watch, uh, as erosion is occurring, how, how much more is occurring over, you know, said period of time. Rob then reiterated our partnership with Goodwin University and the early college advanced manufacturing pathway that enables students right here in Wallingford at Lyman Hall and Sheehan to earn Goodwin College credits through four Goodwin courses we offer at both the high schools. They, those courses are an introduction to CNC, which is computerized numerical control, advanced CAD, which is computer aided design, technical mathematics, and pre-engineering and manufacturing. Goodwin supplies us with professional development to our teachers, so they are equipped to teach these courses. Again, I want to emphasize, our students have the opportunity here to earn college credits while still in high school. We had a good conversation about ways to expose students and their parents to these opportunities available in manufacturing. We need to continue exposing parents to the new world of manufacturing. It's not the old world of standing at a machine and just making a little, you know, back and forth doing one little, making gadgets. You're not making gadgets. These are, these are quality, high-paying jobs. Representatives from Hobson and Motzer said their entry-level positions begin with wages of eighteen dollars right out of high school. There is on-the-job training with career path opportunities where workers can continue their education, all paid for by the company. And in our, uh, Wallingford Public Schools Annual Report, on page five, it says, "Two 2020 graduates are employed in local manufacturing companies as a result of the program." And one 2019 graduate is employed and being sent for an engineering degree paid for by the company. It's working, folks. There's many paths to make our kids successful. As far as what skills, as far as what skills are needed to get into Hobson and Motzer or Albrook Steel or James Manufacturing, these are our three manufacturing stalwarts on this committee. They're there all the time. They emphasize personal responsibility and reliability. Workers need to understand that schedules and deadlines for customers all depend on them showing up for work on time and all the time. And realizing they must work in a safe manner. They are working with machinery and need to respect the power of those machines. Following directions, completing work and forms accurately, and teamwork. That's what it's all about. Those are the skills they need. These are the skills that will get you a good-paying job right out of high school with the potential to make it a great-paying job and a lifelong career. Our next meeting is November fifth, and I can't wait. Uh, Danielle, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you covered it well. It was a very interesting meeting. It was exciting. There's tons of opportunities for our students. Um, so, thank you for that report, Kathy.
Thank you, Mrs. Castelli. STEM Steering Committee, Mrs. Allenson.
There was no meeting that I know of. Okay, no meeting. Thank you.
Systemwide PTAC update, Mrs. Latour.
So we had our first meeting of the year last Tuesday evening. Minutes from the meeting are currently online on our district website. Eighteen participants attended with many schools represented within the district. Given it was the first meeting of the year, uh, Brian Revard, the chairperson of Systemwide PTAC, discussed and explained the structure of Systemwide PTAC and reviewed the protocols for the first school-based meetings that would be occurring within the next month. Community events were shared, as were comments regarding the opening of school and the structure of the instructional day. Ms. Bellisi highlighted the components of our back-to-school plan, including layered mitigation strategies, remote learning options, and quarantine procedures. We discussed that this plan is also flexible, and as, um, our community response to COVID, uh, flexes and changes, um, we will continue to look at our opening plan and make adjustments. Ms. Bellisi also shared the important events that were coming up, uh, this evening at tonight's, uh, September Board of Education meeting, including the Administrator, Teacher, and Paraeducator of the Year presentations. Our next meeting is October nineteenth at six P M. The meeting is scheduled to be virtual.
Thank you, Mrs. Latour. Special Education PTAC update, Ms. Turner.
Our first meeting of the year was on September twentieth. Uh, we had CPAC come and do a presentation on effective communication. We had seventeen individuals come to the meeting. Uh, it was a mixture of staff and parents. It was very well received, a lot of really great information, a lot of interaction. Our, our next meeting is on October seventh at six o'clock. We are presenting an IEP, uh, training to parents. It's specifically tailored for parents. We will be introducing the new IP that will begin on July first. So just a little taste of what the new IP is going to look like. It should be a really great training. Uh, we will also, at that meeting, elect new officers and discuss the rest of this, the year. Additionally, we discussed, um, Frank Piccon is doing another three-part parent series on growing resilience in your child. This was sent, the information was sent out to parents last week. Um, and they can just, uh, respond to us in terms of whether or not they're interested. The series will start, there's one in October and one in January on Tuesdays or Thursday evenings. Uh, and the parents who attended last year loved it, and they're actually, he's doing one just for them this year. That's kind of touching base. How did it go? What are some new strategies that you may need? So we're really excited about that.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Plan of Conservation and Development, Mr. Reynolds.
Yeah, nothing to report.
Food Service Strategic Plan Committee, Mrs. Purcell and Mr. Bondi.
There's no meeting.
Okay. No old business, so we'll move on to Instructional Committee with, um, Mrs. Corso and Mrs. Purcell, please.
Sure. Any discussion on the motion? And we'll take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Allenson? No. Mrs. Castelli? No. Mrs. Corso? No. Mrs. Purcell?
No.
Mrs. Raccio?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
No.
Mr. Ross?
No.
Mr. Votto?
No.
Mrs. Levesque?
No.
So motion is denied? Thank you. Well, uh, this motion is denied. We'll be back in touch with Ms. Daddio. Um, our next item on the agenda, I make a motion that the board approve the retirement of Donna Neary effective October one, 2021. Ms. Neary has been a physical education teacher since August nineteen ninety-nine.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Um, I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of the following candidates to teaching positions for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year contingent upon proper Connecticut certification as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Uh, People Personnel Department, a special ed teacher at Moses Y. and Stevens Chelsea Woodding, and a one-year contracted teacher at Lyman Hall High School, recovery teacher Megan Bucknell.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Uh, so we'll go back to twelve point one. Um, our presentation of our annual report.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, so tonight I wanted to share some of the highlights featured within our report. So this is our annual report for the twenty, 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 twenty-one school year. Um, this year marks our eleventh year of the Wallingford Public School District Strategic Plan. So as you're all aware, um, this plan focuses on everything basically what that we do here in the district with the five main areas, uh, focusing on communication, partnership, community, curriculum, district climate, facilities, and technology. And that really is the focus of our work as we move through and as we plan for our students and our staff. So, this is our annual report for the 2020-2021 school year. This year marks our 11th year of the Wallingford Public School District Strategic Plan. So, as you're all aware, this plan focuses on everything basically that we do here in the district, with the five main areas focusing on communication, partnership, community, curriculum, district climate, facilities, and technology. And that really is the focus of our work as we move through and as we plan for our students and our staff. So, this year, as we've had done every year, our goals, we're really committed to making sure that we review, revise, and implement the practices of programming to support our students' experiencing in social, emotional, their academic needs, and making sure we meet their challenges as we go through. And we do that through our curriculum and making sure that it's rigorous and it's engaging for our students. This year, this past school year, has been an interesting one for us. So, I'm very proud of our team, of our administrators, our teachers, our clerical staff, our IT, food services, our central office team, all of our staff, as they all came together and collaborated to really move and maneuver through the challenges of the pandemic. So, the entire team really stepped up, and while we were handling all of what went on in terms of quarantining and positive cases and making sure we were providing in-person instruction and remote instruction, we really made sure that we maintained that balance of providing professional development and academic supports to our staff, our students, and our families. So, it was a combination of all of that to get through the year, and I'm very proud to say that our staff really rose to the occasion and did a phenomenal job to help collaborate and get us through all of this. So, their flexibility during these challenging times is absolutely noteworthy, and they have to be commended on it because they always kept the students at the center. You know, as we moved through each department, if I could just highlight a little bit, you know, during our special education time, if we look at that, we really made sure our delivery of instruction was on point. We provided mental health support, professional development, and parent support. Through the work of our Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, she made sure that there was parent training, staff trainings in several areas, growing the resilience in your children, advocacy, executive functioning, supporting behaviors at home, structured literacy for our teachers, Orton Gillingham, Spire, just to name a few. So, we really made sure we had that well-rounded support for them as well. Our business manager worked really hard with his team to make sure that we had enough funding to allow us to recoup the 1.6 million in unencumbered funds for the 2019-2020 fund so that we started the next school year, this school year, available, have money that's available in the event of unforeseen circumstances. So, in addition to that, over 600,000 that remains for unanticipated special education expenditures. Our Technology Department under Karen Veu worked very hard to make sure that all of our students and our staff had the materials they need in terms of technology. So, we not only provided them with the one-to-one technology for our students, we provided technology for our staff, we made sure they were well-versed in Google Classroom. They spent a lot of time troubleshooting for our parents at home, helping our students succeed so that when they were home, they could access the materials that they needed to be successful. So, we thanked them from all of that hard work as well. Our Building Maintenance and Grounds, under Mark Deptula, they really did a fabulous job maintaining the buildings at the highest level possible. They ensured from, that all of us had the PPE that everyone needed. They coordinated that, they stored all of it, they made sure they were able to dispense it to all of the classrooms and to all of the buildings so that everyone had what they needed to be successful throughout their school year. In addition to all of that, Food Services Department did an outstanding job last year. Under Jim Bondi, they really made sure that all students, in person and if they were virtual, had meals. So, they really went above and beyond as well, making sure that they were delivering and out in the community, delivering meals to all of our students, to making sure that they get what they needed to be successful in school as well. And they were always positive and gracious and did everything they can for our students. So, really appreciated that along the way. In the Personnel Department, we spent some time negotiating contracts. We navigated through federal and state laws surrounding quarantining, contact tracing, supporting our staff with any accommodations that they may need. We worked with the unions collaboratively to make sure that there was a balance between the staff needs and the student needs, and we made sure then that as we were processing all of those, that our students had what they needed. But the staff was successful, and one of the most successful things I think we did was help our parent educators grow. So, they had the opportunity to work in our classrooms, to act as subs towards the end of the school year, to step in and help when we had high absences. So, we really thank all of them for that as well. Other key members that I wanted to address was the Nurse Coordinator, the Director of Wallingford Health Department, our nurses, and our administrators across the district. They spent a tremendous amount of time contact tracing, calling families, explaining the process, making sure they were set up for a remote instruction during those times. So, we thank you for all of that because it was an all-encompassing time for us. So, while we were navigating through COVID, I also wanted to make sure I highlighted some of our district accomplishments. So, when I look at our graduation rates and I take a look, we did maintain, so if you look at Lyman Hall for 2020, it was 97.6; Sheehan, it was 96. And as Mrs. Costelli had discussed earlier, one of the big highlights was the opportunity for our students to be in some of those other programs, so not just college-bound, but also exploring other opportunities that we have been able to give to them. And so, the two graduates that were employed in the local manufacturing companies that had an opportunity then to grow is something we wanted to highlight as well. We would not be successful without all of our community partners as well. So, much of our success is attributed to them, not just their monetary contributions, but their time and their sharing of their expertise and the support of our staff. So, during the 2020-2021 school year, we received 501,417 in competitive grants. And so, we're very proud of that and the donations that we had along the way that did help us all be successful throughout this. If we take a look at the number of students choosing a four-year college, while it has decreased a little bit, I think a part of it is attributed to our hard work. We have our career counselors, our counselors at our high schools, that are really meeting with our students and getting to their needs, discussing with them what their interests are, and making sure we're pointing them in the right direction. So, taking the time to really see if they want to go to a technical route or other things that interest them. So, it's not just college. College can be a great opportunity for many of our students, but maybe they also have other interests. So, making sure we tapping into that as well. And just to highlight some other high school data, over 800 students participated in advanced placement classes. 66% of the students earned a score of three or higher. We had 94 students inducted into the National Honor Society and 83 students honored as varsity scholars. I do want to turn it over to Mrs. Latour to share a lot of the accomplishments that she had and the professional development that she offered this past school year.
So, I'm just going to briefly touch upon some of the curriculum assessment and professional development that occurred in the 2021 school year, because you know how much I love to talk about curriculum and instruction. We started off the school year, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention it, we had three recovery teams that started the 2021 school year that were made up of quite a few teachers from all levels, from preschool all the way through high school. And each committee worked on a component of what our office does on a daily basis. There was a curriculum one, an instruction one, and a professional development. And they worked together as a team of teachers to brainstorm and collaborate on a thoughtful approach to a school year that was going to be far from what we consider normal. And what left that committee was the need to look at our curricular units and assist our teachers in really narrowing the focus of each curricular unit to focus on the priority standards. While we still incorporated in a lot of the supporting indicators that aligned to the common core, it was really important for our teachers and our students to really get to the meat in the heart of every unit. We also worked to continue the calibration of student work against our indicators, so using the scoring criteria to look at student work, to ensure that students are being graded and assessed in the same manner regardless of what class that they're in, as well as aligning student assessments to the performance indicators. So, through that work, that really took on the focus for the remaining of the school year so that it was a consistent progression throughout the whole school year with the focus on filling gaps that occurred from the spring prior while we were all remote learning as a district, and to get students the help that they needed so that they could continue on with their studies. The professional development that we included, our plan looked very different from a normal school year. We front-loaded a lot of our professional development with those eight days that we had at the beginning of the school year. And while some of that was logistics related to COVID in terms of cleaning and sanitizing your room and just working within a COVID environment, a lot also had to do with how we were instructing and assessing in a COVID environment. So, we looked at professional development workshops that were led by both the coordinators within my office, building administrators, but also some of our teacher leaders, where they looked at what worked best for them in the spring of 2020 when, as a district, we were all remote learning, and how to translate some of that to a hybrid environment. We had many different instructional models in the 2021 school year. So, we ran professional development at the beginning of the year to front-load some of that information for our staff about how you could assess in a distance-learning environment, how you could look at a child's reading in a virtual distance-learning environment, strategies for instruction, for small group work, for assessment of fluency, all took place prior to the school year. Technology was also a big focus, and it needed to be because of the different instructional models that we had by level. We introduced a lot of different technology that was new, and we had our teacher leaders promoting that in daily, at the beginning of the year, professional development workshops where teachers could pop in and hit up a professional development opportunity that was best suited to their individual needs. So, we looked at EdPuzzle and Paradek Jamboard, Screencastify, our document cameras that Karen Veu, our IT Director, was so on top of things to purchase for us before the need became huge across the state. Seesaw, and simple things like, while you're teaching, in-person learners and remote learners really had to capture what's going on in a class with a document camera or with Screencastify so that everybody gets a really stellar learning experience. It wouldn't be a school year without a focus, obviously, on instruction and assessment. We had the wonderful opportunity, and while it was a little bit different, we made it work with literacy how and our structured literacy that continues to make a profound impact on our K2 schools, and our 3-5 schools can't wait to see that come into their buildings. We looked at computational fluency from the math lens, designing small group instruction at our elementary level based on reading skills and foundational reading knowledge, as well as assessing student work in a variety of different ways. And then, because it was a COVID year, because we were returning from a spring that had everyone remote and disconnected from the school community, we looked at social, emotional learning, we looked at SEL practices that are both culturally and linguistically responsive, the nurtured-heart work that was done at the K2 schools, and trauma-informed instruction, which we know how important that is for our students. And then finally, the beginnings of cultural awareness and what that looks like in our schools with diversity and equity. So, we will continue the strong foundation that we laid in 2021 as we're approaching the 2122 school year, which it's hard to believe that's where we are. And we have already started with that at the beginning of the school year, and as a board, you will continue to see our professional development plans, both as an early release day, but our full days as well, so that you can see some of the workshops that are offered and see how they're making connections from level to level, class to class. That's it.
Well done.
Thank you, both. This concludes the Instructional Committee portion of the agenda.
Thank you.
Back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Corso and Mrs. Purcell. The next item on the agenda is the Operations Committee, Mrs. Allenson and Mrs. Costelli, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, our last meeting, our meeting was called Order at 7:30 p.m. on September 13th. The first Order of Business was to accept the minutes from the last meeting, which was way back on June 14th. The next Order of Business was Transportation Update from Durham School Services. We discussed the reasons for delays of buses and the look forward to a potential transportation application in which parents can track the buses and gain some security on whether the bus has come in the mornings. That's like the main, that was the main concern that was at least brought up to me. This requires an update to the bus's GPS system, which is expected to complete sometime near end of October 2021. Once that update is complete, we will have another conversation with Durham School Services to discuss the transportation application. It's not like it's definitely coming for those concerned on either side, so we're going to have more discussion on that. Next, we heard from Mr. Barone regarding the financial projection through the end of June 2021. We ended the school year with an operating budget surplus of 962,000. It should be noted that this is made possible due to COVID relief funding and CARES Act funding of about 2.35 million, and I feel like that might be wrong. I think it's right. When added to our prior year's surplus, we ended the year with a total 2% balance of 2.563 million. We then approved that going forward, the projections will be rounded to the nearest thousand, just like this report. Finally, we briefly reviewed the dispersions of our ARP and SIR budget. The vast majority, 4 million out of 4.5 million roughly, will be used on salaries and related benefits, with some being used on building and other services. Mr. Bondi reviewed the food services numbers with us, with a total income for the year of 1.003 million. We had 1.674 million in expenses. The Board of Ed subsidized the cash flow by with about 257,000 in the beginning of the school year, bringing us to a total cash loss of $413,000. Our meals per day continued to rise as students returned to school in increasing capacities, and June actually showed a positive ratio of expense to loss at 6.8, sorry, not expense to loss, income to loss, and that was 6.8 to 6.4. I'm happy to see things moving in a positive direction, and congratulations to the food services team for all that they're doing, and Mr. Bondi for his great job, too. Mr. Deptula took us through several projects that are going on at the schools next. We have a lot of things going on in many schools, and we should see many improvements, and many of which are related to the energy studies, and then some improvements to our heating services. Couple of little emergencies that we did quickly, but overall, great job also by the Facilities Department. We adjourned our meeting at about 8:30 p.m. Anybody have anything to correct? I'll send you it in an email. And with that, I will close it off. Thank you, Mrs. Levesque. Back to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allenson and Mrs. Costelli, the Chair and Vice Chair of that committee. And I don't believe there's new business, so we're on to the administrative report with Superintendent Bellisi.
Thank you. It has been a very busy but successful start to the school year. So, it's been wonderful to have all of our students and staff back in person. I mean, just to walk around the buildings and just to hear the students, you know, just to feel that, feel what it's like when everyone is back is amazing. So, our staff has been working very hard. We're still maneuvering through the pandemic. We are continuing to contact trace and to quarantine, to work collaboratively with Kathy Nilon and Steve Civitelli, and for us to be on the state calls every Tuesday morning to get the updates from the state and follow those executive orders that kind of come through. So, we're taking it one day at a time, one week at a time, but we have a very...
Thank you, Mrs. Levack. Back to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Allenson and Mrs. Costelli, the Chair and Vice Chair of that committee. And I don't believe there's new business, so we're on to the administrative report with Superintendent Bellisi.
Thank you. It has been a very busy but successful start to the school year. So it's been wonderful to have all of our students and staff back in person. I mean, just to walk around the buildings and just to hear the students, you know, just to feel that, feel what it's like when everyone is back is amazing. So our staff has been working very hard. We're still maneuvering through the pandemic. We are continuing to contact trace and to quarantine, to work collaboratively with Kathy Nilon and Steve Civitelli, and for us to be on the state calls every Tuesday morning to get the updates from the state and follow those executive orders that kind of come through. So we're taking it one day at a time, one week at a time, but we have a very strong structure in place. For students that are quarantined thus far, we found it successful for them at the K-5 level to be able to work with those remote teachers that we hired, the one-year contracted teachers, and then at the 612 level for them to have the ability to be able to stream in so that they can at least hear the instruction provided by the classroom teachers. So far, we're, you know, providing what our students need. We are continuing to revisit and listen to the guidance from the state. One of the things that we have been working on is the adherence and the compliance to the Executive Order 13G, which has provided the Personnel Department with a lot of work, and they've done a phenomenal job keeping track and maintaining all of the information that we need in terms of vaccinations and attestations, and if there are exemptions, the weekly testing. So while it's a huge undertaking, they've done a phenomenal job under Dr. Thompson, and we have Dave Bryant collaborating with all of them and working with them in that department, and Sharon Bukowski and Jen Crass to make sure that we are in compliance. We do have to collect all of that information and maintain it and follow up with the staff. So we are continuing to do that. On top of that, we're monitoring the buses and the bus drivers. Dominic Barone and Mary Ann Croce have done a phenomenal job collaborating with Durham and making sure that we are keeping the bus drivers and maintaining them and paying attention to the bus routes and if they're late, or notifying families if they are late. So we're going to continue to monitor that. The state has provided some supports for us in terms of contacts and next steps if we start to find that we are short on bus drivers. At this time, I know we are a little concerned, but Dominic did meet with the bus company this afternoon, and I feel like we're in a good place right now, but we'll continue to monitor it and keep you all up to date as it moves through. So I thank everyone for their patience with students coming off the bus late. I know it's tough, but we're continuing to monitor that and do the best we can with that. Some other things I wanted to just highlight. We did have some incidences at one of our high schools especially in regards to one of the TikTok things, videos that has been out. So it is known as devious lick. We are aware of it. I do know our administrators at both high schools have communicated with the families to let them know what this is, what it's all about, that it's not an acceptable behavior. We do want to make sure that our students are safe at all times and that they are not destroying the bathrooms. I guess a piece of this is that they go in and they destroy either parts of the bathroom, and they video it, they can clog some of the drains along with it, and so it has caused some damage. We have addressed it with the students. It has been very few incidences, but our administration and our maintenance department are on top of all of it. So we'll continue to monitor it and message out that it is not an acceptable form of behavior as we move through the school year. We are continuing this year with parent-teacher conferences are coming up next month. We are going to offer them in person. We want to maintain that option for parents to come into the building, to meet with their child's teacher in person. We find it to be a very valuable experience. We're going to maintain those levels of mitigation strategies that we have in place with the distancing and the masks and making sure that there's hand sanitizer available and the spacing out when they're in the classrooms. We will be providing, if parents want, a virtual option if they so choose it, but we really would encourage that our parents have the opportunity to come in and meet and have an in-person conversation with their child's teacher. We do want to make sure we send some important reminders. We continue to message this to the families, but it is really important, we say it to our staff and to our families, that if your child is not feeling well, or if you as a staff member are not feeling well, to stay home and to make sure that you are following all of those self-check. If you're not feeling well, to stay home. We just want to continue to keep our students in person and learning as best we can and as long as we can. That is all I have for right now.
Thank you, Superintendent Bellisi. Yes. Oh, Mrs. Corso.
Can I add something?
Absolutely.
Sure. Thank you for offering those in-person parent-teacher conferences. I think a lot of families will be happy with that. But I did want to circle back to the bus, our busing issue. Well, it's not our issue, it's everybody's issue. A couple of years back, there was an app that was discussed, and it was tracking the buses. So like a parent would put this app on the phone, and we could see where the bus is. There have been times that I've gotten a phone call that our bus was late, 45 minutes late, and then it showed up like 20 minutes prior to that. So it was actually early. And there's times where I've had a late bus but no phone call. So I'm wondering if we can look into that app and if that's something that we can consider.
If I can just add to that also, that did come up at PTAC a couple of years ago. At the time, and we'd have to go back to Mary Ann Croce, but at the time, there were parents on both sides in favor of it, and parents worried about the security of it because if you saw where your child was, you also had access to where everybody else's child on the bus is. So it had to be somehow protected, that it wasn't just anybody with the bus route number can go in and look at it. So they weren't as mature to be able to do that with the app. So I think that that's something that when the GPS system, we talked about this a little bit last time, you might not have heard it.
One of the last meetings.
When the GPS system gets updated, then Mr. Barone was going to go back to Durham and see if that app has matured a little bit in safety for families.
Mrs. Allenson.
Thank you. One thing to add to that, when we did actually have the conversation with the bus company, she did say that you would need to have the student's specific ID in order to like get it into the app to look at your bus, and you would only have your own buses, bus routes. So I'm sure that there's more to come with that, which is why I kind of put it out there that it'll be coming. But it does seem like it's a little better than just look at every bus in the district and see where they are.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to announcements. On Monday, October 4th, 2021, there'll be an Instructional Committee meeting via Google Meet at 6:30 PM. On Tuesday, October 12th, 2021, there'll be an Operations Committee meeting via Google Meet at 6:30 PM. And the date of our next regularly scheduled board meeting will be Monday, October 25th, 2021, right here in the Robert F. Parisi Town Council Chambers at 6:30 PM. And if there is no further business of an official nature to come before the board this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Thank you very much.